Welcome to today's virtual cabinet meeting. Before we start the formal business of the meeting, I must remind you that the audio of this meeting is being live broadcast on the council's website and the video of the meeting will be published after the meeting. And for the purpose of the recording, I'd like to confirm the councillors that are present here today. The Chair of the meeting, we have councillor John Clark, we have councillor Michael Payne, councillor Peter Barnes, councillor David Ellis, councillor Gary Gregory, councillor Jenny Hollingsworth, councillor Viv McCrossan and councillor Henry Wheeler. Thank you, Chair, I'll hand over to you now.
Thank you, just to remind people listening to this or looking at it eventually, this is a district council or a borough council meeting, not a parish meeting, which is famed across the airwaves and everywhere else. So everybody will be reasonably behaved and hopefully we'll get through the business pretty quickly. Right, we'll start with, welcome anyway, last sunshine's come out or we're on to the sunshine's come out and we look on a pleasant winter's day. The apologies for absence, please.
Non-received, thank you Chair.
Thank you. Item two, which is on page five to seven, which is the previous correct record, the minutes of the meeting held on 28th of January 2021, I'll move those from the Chair.
Seconded.
Thank you. And we'll move on now to declarations of interests. Anyone wish to declare a declaration in any of the items?
John, John, I do just wonder whether the Gedlin Borough Five Year Housing Land Supply Assessment 2020, whether you and I as councillors need to make a declaration in relation to any land that may be referred to in the report that's owned by the county councillor, I'll take guidance from either Mike or Fran on that issue.
Yeah, if we could have you around Fran.
I think it's Sarah, Sarah Leader.
Good afternoon councillor Clark, I'm attending today on behalf of Fran Wiley, so solicitor for the, from legal services. Yes, I think it would be sensible for you both to declare a collective non-procurnary interest for councillor Payne and councillor Clark as county councillors in respect of any land which is owned by the county council.
Thank you, so thanks for reminding on that, Michael.
Can we take that as read then, Sarah, that that's what John and I have done?
Yes, that can be taken as a declaration and we'll record that in the minutes of this meeting.
Brilliant, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item four, which is the updated work of the policy advisers, that's on page nine fourteen and that's the chief execs report.
Thank you Leader. Just very quickly, the policy advisers were appointed back in May 2019, quite a while ago now, and that was to support their respective cabinet members or portfolio holders in the development and progression of specific Gedlin Plan actions. So far, this has been very successful as set out in the report, but just to go into a bit more detail, so all of the five policy advisers have undertaken significant amounts of work. In summary, the first section in the report talks about what is standard across all of the five policy advisers and this work has involved understanding their new roles, clearly it was a new role for each of them back in 2019. Portfolio holders do have regular monthly meetings with all of the directors and the service managers as well, now obviously changed into the heads of service and the policy advisers accompanied the portfolio holder to those meetings and has provided significant input to those over the months as time has progressed on. Certainly involvement in feeding back updates, ideas and any issues that have been raised, certainly through their own work and investigations and having their ear to the ground in the, you know, in the boroughs they represent and in the wards they represent and those issues and concerns have been passed, excuse me, sorry, have been passed on and, you know, embedded into all the discussions around, around that work. And I think also part of the work has involved keeping up to date with the various council meetings and the business held, you know, across the council over the last 18 months. So on top of this, I think as set out in the report at paragraph 1.7, each policy adviser has undertaken separate works in the furtherance of council objectives and I certainly won't be going through all those because they are extremely varied and they have achieved a lot in the short space of time. So they are set out in the report, Leader. I think it's also important to remember that this is set against the worst time we've ever had in terms of the Covid pandemic, so it has caused a lot of difficulties, not only for officers and members to deliver on those Gedlin Plan priorities and actions, but as I say, I still think we have achieved a lot as a set of officers, policy advisers and portfolio holders as well. So I believe Leader, you've got, you've taken the opportunity to review and look at the roles of the policy advisers and would like just to look at changing some of the remits. So I'll probably hand back to you now Leader, if that's okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks Michael, then refer passing, it's a bit like rugby this is, but not English rugby. Michael.
Yeah, thanks, thanks Leader. Caroline, I don't know whether you or Alec could allow me to just share my screen, I think at the moment presently it only allows the presenter or organizer of the meeting to share the screen, if you could do so, I'll present the recommendation, thank you very much. If you bear with me a second.
I'll see what I can do.
That's fine Caroline, it's allowing me to do that now.
It allowed you, thank you.
Can colleagues see the shared screen?
Yeah.
Yes.
So as the chief executive has referenced, comprehensive report that sets out the work done since the May 2019 election and since the appointment of the councillors named in front of us in relation to their policy adviser roles. The policy adviser roles are obviously a matter for and in the gift of the leader of the council and in light of some of the current challenges and perceived challenges going forward for our communities and for the council, the leader of the council is suggesting to amend the focus and remit of the policy advisers as explained on this sheet. So the leader would like to move recommendations, seconded by me, that cabinet notes the leader has amended the focus and remit of the policy advisers as follows. So the new remits will be policy adviser for regeneration, recovery and rural affairs, councillor Julie Najork. Clearly we know that regeneration, recovery and reset post-Covid is going to be a very big issue. We know the government has aspirations in relation to the levelling up agenda and certainly additional and extra focus from elected members alongside the relevant cabinet member, which is councillor Jenny Hollingsworth, would be really welcome and important in this area, given that it's a stated priority for, for the government and clearly will be an important piece of work for us as a council. We know there are pressures on high streets and the high streets may change post the pandemic, but we also know that there are some particular challenges at the moment for our, for our rural communities, not least in light of some of the climate change issues and additional flooding that we are now seeing in our rural communities, but also rural poverty, access to funding for rural communities, rural crime being, being issues. So clearly that is an important area, it's an area that the leader feels should be elevated and given greater status and that's why that appears there in the first title. The second title is policy adviser for equalities, diversity and young people, which is councillor Catherine Fox. As the report before us today states, Leader, councillor Fox has played a very important and integral role in the equalities framework that's recently been brought forward, working alongside councillor Viv McCrossan, who's the appropriate cabinet member. We know that in society, disappointingly, there are still far too many structural inequalities that exist, whether that be in terms of race issues, whether that be in terms of gender issues, whether that be in terms of sexuality issues, you know, or a whole variety of structural inequalities that still exist within society. This is a crucial area of focus for the council and we thought it was really, really important that that was given elevated status. And clearly, as councillor McCrossan and councillor Fox have been highlighting in the last year, engaging our young people is very, very important. They're often not the people who will read your average council magazine or correspondence that goes out from the council, they may not always see the council as an authority as being relevant to their lives, but it is really important that we're supporting them because certainly young people have been very unduly hit by this pandemic. The third title is policy adviser for environment and climate change. Councillor McCrossan has been doing an outstanding job, working with groups across the borough in relation to some of the big cleanups, litter picking, and let me just put on the record on behalf of the council and cabinet, a thanks to the amazing work that's been going off right across the community. I know the Carlton Hill Community Group have done a great job, Emma Green and her colleagues and friends alongside councillor Wheeler in Coppis and Killersick have been doing a fantastic job and councillor Payling, but there are also many others in Gedlin Village, you know, in Ravenshead, in other areas that have been doing a great job of litter picking. I know councillor McCrossan's had a big role there and I know that he's very passionate about the issues in relation to climate change. You've recently asked me as a cabinet member to lead on climate change as a stated priority leader and I think it's appropriate that climate change is specifically referenced in that policy adviser title for councillor McCrossan. The final two are policy adviser for women, domestic abuse and hate crime. Sadly, we know that domestic abuse issues and hate crime issues continue to increase across the country and be, be areas that often are below the radar, not always given the, the, the coverage that they deserve. This is an area that councillor Ellis in his portfolio has been working on, you know, very strongly with Nottinghamshire Police. Nottinghamshire Police have got a good track record, in fact actually I think are recognised as a national lead in relation to some of the issues around hate crime and domestic abuse. Our own police and crime commissioner Paddy Tipping and deputy police crime commissioner Emma Thudie have certainly been leading the way, the national debate on this issue. Rosa obviously has her own skills and experience that she brings to that area and we know unfortunately that there still continue to be barriers for, for women in society. So clearly that is an important area. And finally Leader, councillor Desgivens was already, and I know councillor Wheeler will attest to this, been working very closely on issues in relation to homelessness, which actually is, is a substantive item on our agenda today in terms of future temporary accommodation provision, but we also know Leader that heritage is an important stated priority for, for this administration. Obviously the heritage way, the work that's been done recently alongside the heritage lottery will continue to be an important area and we know that Desgivens will bring value to that area alongside homelessness as well. So hopefully those broad themes and titles encapsulate the key issues within the Gedlin Plan and the emerging issue space in the council and I think all of, all of the colleagues highlighted there are appointed in those roles will continue to add value to the council and our local communities in the way that they have done, as elucidated in this report before us today Leader. So that recommendation is moved by the leader and seconded by myself and I hope the explanation there sets out the reasons for those changing remits. I'll, I'll stop sharing my screen.
Thanks Michael, any comments? No comments received then, I've moved that on page nine, it was removed and seconded where asked to know the content of the report. Okay, we agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item five, which is the temporary accommodation, I think this is, Alice doing it.
Two, good afternoon everyone. So obviously before you have the report on temporary accommodation, which is a very detailed piece of, oh Jo, I'm so sorry, I didn't see you there, I do apologise. Jo wants to talk to us instead, I do apologise.
Thank you everyone, thanks Chair. So it is a, it's a bit of a triple act again, Chair, as, as last time, because this report highlights a key piece of work that the temporary accommodation working group have been doing and as you're aware from previous reports that we've brought, that's the accumulation of various teams, so strategic housing led by Ally and the housing needs team, which is led by Paul Whitworth, who are both on the call, but also with support from other departments such as legal and finance. So it's a collective corporate piece of work that we've been doing today. Yes, I specifically want to just talk and update you with the work that we've been doing based on reducing the reliance on B and B and nightly paid for accommodation, but also to update members with the progress with, with various external funding opportunities as well. So as members will be well aware, currently the council relies heavily on the use of B and B and nightly paid for accommodation and this is highlighted by the amount that we actually spend on it each year, which is detailed in paragraph 1.8. Officers are now seeking to intervene and to, to be proactive in respect to this piece of work and the reliance that we have, as I say, on B and B. And there's been a lot of detailed work undertaken as part of the temporary accommodation options appraisal, which is included in your packs at appendix A. What I wanted to do today is not to go through all the details of the appraisal and all the work that's been done, but just to really highlight the, the kind of the preferred route and what officers are seeking on, on doing, really as I say, to get on the front foot and to be proactive when it comes to temporary accommodation. So from the research and the work that we've done, there's a clear need in the borough to have temporary accommodation, but what we really want to do is try to make sure it's in the right place, the right type of accommodation and, and best place for the people that need it. So through the temporary accommodation appraisal work, we've identified three different delivery routes that we're putting forward. The first option is to purchase some properties. So currently we've identified the need for about 15 properties at any one time for use as temporary accommodation. So the first option is to purchase some properties and officers are seeking to buy eight different properties. We've identified there's a suitable supply of different properties in the right location and through the financial appraisal work, we've been able to demonstrate that actually this is a really strong option for consideration as any cost can be recouped through the rental income or eventual resale. What that also does is it increases the council's asset base and therefore could be considered as a long-term option. If the need for temporary accommodation dropped, then the asset could be disposed of and a capital receipt realised. So again, what we need in order to progress this option is a capital budget and that is a separate cabinet paper on this agenda, so I won't go into the details of that. But if we did get the budget approved today, we would, we would need further approvals for the acquisition and that would be sought from the portfolio holder for resources and reputation in accordance with the executive delegations. The second option we'll, we're, we've identified is to build our own properties. So this is quite a different way of approaching sites that we own, but we do have two sites, Station and Burton Road, where we've been working to identify the development potential. The initial schemes that we have show that we can get 17 units on this site and we can fund that through section 106 monies and borrowing. And the detailed plans are currently being drawn up to inform a detailed business case and to make sure that we can move quickly. This is an option which would also be considered a longer term method of securing temporary accommodation units. And again, from the options appraisal, that, that both sites are in highly sustainable locations and actually if we could use a few of those units for temporary accommodations, we've identified the need for seven in this location, we can move quickly and make sure that they're, they're moved into temporary accommodation use. Again, with this proposal, we would need a capital budget to be approved and that again is a separate cabinet paper on this agenda, so that's part of the budget approvals later on. We would also need to get a detailed business case and development scheme approved by cabinet in the future to progress with that. The third and final option, preferred route, is to lease some properties. So again, in the short term, if we're building our own properties at Station and Burton Road, there's an opportunity to lease some properties to cover that interim period. And so the proposal is to lease seven properties for a couple of year periods to make sure that then we can build the units on Station and Burton Road. So I know I've rattled through that quite quickly and cabinet are asked to note the options appraisal as attached at appendix A, which goes into a lot more detail of those options and why we think they're the preferred routes. Officers will then need to secure further approvals, as I've detailed and also included within the report, to progress these properties, either to purchase or to lease and also to develop the sites at Station and Burton Road. Cabinet are also know, asked to note that there is the approval for a capital budget for the build and purchase options, as I've mentioned, and they are presented later in this agenda. So just to make you aware that we, there is a capital budget set aside for 1.154 million for purchasing eight properties and 2.647 million for the development of Station and Burton Road, which is, as I say, is another item for consideration later in the agenda. As I've mentioned, officers have been busy working on securing extra, further external funding and the full details of that are included within the report at paragraph 1.12 to 1.16. And I think the key thing just to mention here is that we're very keen on trying to make sure that we identify what Gedlin's priorities are in terms of housing and homelessness and then seek the, the relevant funding that we need. So again, members are asked to note the work that the officers are doing to secure external funding and as, as detailed in the report. So that was me going through that quite quickly councillor Clark, but I know you've got a longer agenda item, so if there's any questions, obviously happy to take them.
Thanks, thanks Joelle. Anything, anybody wishes to say? Viv?
Thanks Joelle for the report, it was a very good report and, you know, really a tremendous piece of work here and a really difficult subject, it's quite tragic really when you look at, in this day and age, we're still having to put large families in bed and breakfast accommodation as well, it's a, it's a tragedy really, but I know we're doing our absolute best to, to meet these needs. Just one point from me, I would find it useful, I mean, it's not in the report, but I would find it useful to have the democratic and demographic information regarding when we're talking about the client group, to know who they are. So in terms of thinking about gender, age, ethnicity, disability, you know, just, just because we talk about the group, but we, I don't know, you know, I'd like to be able to think in terms of the equality impact assessment, I've got an understanding in our community about the groups of people that are more likely to be made homeless, to see whether in terms of, does that reflect the population of Gedlin? Are there some groups overrepresented? So I, I would find it useful to have that data included when we have these reports along because it, you know, it talks about a group of people, but I don't know who they are other than they might have one child or two children or be single. Thank you.
Chair, if I could just come back on that and I think actually councillor McCrossan, you've identified another piece of work that we're actually doing to do some more detailed breakdown work with each of our placements or households in temporary accommodation. So we're doing a full case review at the minute just to really understand and, and be very Gedlin specific, why are people in temporary accommodation? Why are they still in temporary accommodation and what we can be doing to help support them? So the work of the temporary accommodation working group is very, very wide, but that is absolutely one of the areas that we're doing some more work. So we'll take that on board and in terms of further reports, we'll have a, I'll think about how we can present that in a, in a, in a more detailed way for you, but thank you. Thank you, comment.
Thanks Joelle. David.
Thank you.
Thank you Chair, I just want to commend the work of the, of the officer working group as they've obviously taken a systemic and systematic look at, at homelessness and we know that homelessness, as it affects the council, is very much a demand-led, led thing. It's down to changes in society, down to welfare change, welfare, so-called reforms, welfare changes, which have, have put a lot of pressure on, on people. And we know that bed and breakfast is not suitable for families, it's not suitable and it's a costly exercise for us as a council. So anything we can do to reduce the use of bed and breakfast is to be commended, I think the strategy is right, a mix of purchase and lease build is, is the right thing to do. If I read the report right, we've currently got about 13 units that we, we lease our own and this, this proposal is to, is to double that, which is, which I think is the appropriate response to this. I think it's something that we ought to, to be pleased for as a, as a council and I fully support it, thank you.
Thanks David. Anybody else? My call.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, like David, I think this is a really welcome piece of work and obviously something the cabinet have been, you know, pushing at for a while now. I remember the debate we had a year or so ago, John, and I still think it's a crying shame that we live in the fifth richest country in the world and yet we have hundreds of thousands of people who are sleeping rough and we know that the average age of death for, for, for a man who is homeless is 45 and for a woman is 43 and I think people will find those facts shocking. You're also seven times, 17 times more likely to be attacked violently if you live in homelessness, homelessness situation than, than if you're a citizen who has a roof over your head and a, and a house. And I think those facts are stark facts. We also know the context in which this report is brought, Leader, is that homelessness has been increasing over the last five years, quite rapidly actually, to a peak just prior to the pandemic. And I think it's shocking that we've only just now as a country collectively come to a point of view that, oh, there's a pandemic, we ought to get some of these people off the streets and start supporting them. And, and I think that is a sad indictment of where our national government is at as a country that prides itself on being a developed country and that claims to be a compassionate country. So I'm delighted to see this report here today, I'm delighted to see that the Borough Council, using the limited tools it's got, is taking action. Clearly the right thing is about both reducing the cost in terms of bed and breakfast and nightly accommodation, but also as councillor Ellis says, making sure we've got accommodation that is fit for purpose. It's not an unreasonable expectation of any civilised society for people to have a roof over their head and, and I think that's something we ought to be striving to. So I certainly welcome this as a first step, however, I think there are additional steps after this. You and I have spoken to the chief executive about this, John, which is within the confines of the HRA, the council ought to be striving and be ambitious to be building its own council homes and I know that there are plans afoot and work going on in, in relation to that. But as David Ellis says, I think this is a very systematic approach, a very thorough approach that's been taken, unsurprisingly, given some of the expertise we've got in the area from Alison and her team, Paul and her team, Jo bringing the strategic, you know, vision to the project as well. So I think this is to be welcomed, but I just think it's a crying shame, we're still living in a country where we have fellow citizens and we all see them. I saw somebody homeless just two nights ago as I was walking down to the superstore on Mansfield Road in Red Hill. So, you know, it's, it's, this is a really awful situation and it's a responsibility of all of us as a civilised society to make sure that when we do try and build back better after this pandemic, we start treating ourselves and each other with a little bit more respect and compassion because I think most households are only ever one or two months away from destitution in terms of mortgage payments and other bills. This could happen to anybody if they were to lose their job or unfortunately, you know, lose maybe a member of the family who was earning a large chunk of the money that pays for the mortgage and other bills. So this is a positive step forward, John, a positive piece of work by, by officers, but certainly not complacent, there is always more work to, to do while ever, there are still people in our country who are, are unfortunately having to sleep in the freezing cold out on the streets.
Thank you, and I've just seen Alice put her hand up there, I was going to bring you in Alice because you're another one of our experts in the team, so.
I think, obviously, good afternoon everyone, it was just really to follow on from the very poignant point that councillor Payne had made and just to give assurance to our cabinet that by working in partnership across the county, we've been able to access, coming up to one and a half million a year, additional funding to help tackle rough sleeping on a countywide level and also with the next steps accommodation, again in partnership with Brockstow and Rushcliffe, through that initiative, we're looking to bring forward nearly another 10 units of accommodation. So please be assured that those funding opportunities are out there, Joelle is hugely supportive of me taking quite an active role on behalf of other partners in the county. But by doing this joined up approach, we fare disproportionately well with MHCRG in the awarding of funding and whilst thankfully the rough sleepers that we have in the borough are relatively low numbers, they can be very difficult to work with, particularly if they're entrenched and with this funding, I believe we've been able to make a real difference. So thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No, fine, okay then, I'll move it, it's on page nine. No, it's policy advisers, move over John, temporary accommodation, it's on page 15 and there are four items here in the recommendations, I'll take those as red, I'll move those and second it.
Seconded.
Thank you, we agreed? We're agreed, thank you. Moving on, thanks Ali, thanks Joelle.
Thank you.
Planning Policy Manager, Jo, is it Jo's going to do this or Mike Avery?
It is, I'm here.
Jo's there.
Hello there Leader.
Bottom of the screen, so you keep your hand on it. There we are.
Members will be familiar with this report, it's a standard report that planning policy bring to you each year, so I'll focus on the key changes from last year. So the NPPF requires local authorities to update their five-year land supply on an annual basis. So this latest report sets out the position as at the 31st of March 2020 and the five-year period covered is 2020 to 2025. For clarity, this is the housing requirement as calculated against the government's standard methodology as published in December 2020 and previous assessments have been compared against the aligned. assessments have been compared against the aligned core strategy, although that was adopted in September 2014. So therefore, we now need to move to comparing our assessment against the standard method. We're conscious that we would normally bring this report to you a little earlier in the, in the financial year. And the reason for the delay in updating our five-year land supply assessment on this occasion is twofold. Firstly, the five-year land supplies informed by our SLAR, our Strategic Housing Land Availability Assessment. And a key part of that SLAR update is a mail shot and contact with developers and landowners promoting their land for development. We would normally do that early summer, May, June time, but clearly that period last year was only shortly after the first lockdown. So there was an extreme period of uncertainty and it wasn't the right time to be sending out that mail shot. So hence the delay there. And the other reason for the delay is because the 2020 SLAR update has been prepared on the basis of a new common methodology for preparing the SLAR, which has been worked up in conjunction with the other authorities who are preparing the Greater Nottingham Strategic Plan with us. So Brockstow, Arrow Wash and Nottingham City and Rushcliffe. So that has been a big piece of work, taking about 14 months. But we think that at the end of this process, we've got a far more transparent and robust methodology, which will underpin both our five-year land supply assessments, but also plan preparation moving forwards. It has been a very valuable exercise. The outcome of the latest five-year land supply assessment is very positive. It shows that we do have a five-year land supply plus 20% buffer of land. And the reason for the 20% buffer is as a result of our housing delivery test results that were published earlier this year. We now have a 6.53 year supply of land, and this is a significant increase from the 2019 assessment, at which we had a 5.08 supply of land. The reason for this significant increase is twofold. Partly, it's as a result of the new SLAR methodology that we have that takes, as I say, a more robust and transparent approach. But a lot of the assumptions that we use, the evidence for those has been updated and it's shown that some of the, that the assumptions that we were using previously were a little too cautious. So we've been able to update that and use more shorter time periods in terms of land coming forward and delivery rates, for example. And the other reason for the increase in, in supply is partly where we are in the planned period. So following on from the adoption of the core strategy and more recently the local planning document, we now have a large number of housing sites that are really starting to deliver quite quickly. And so they will be delivering within the current five-year period. And so the recommendation of this report is to ask cabinet to note the content of the updated five-year housing supply assessment for 2020, which is provided as appendix A for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Jo. Comments, Jenny? You're on mute. Mute.
The phrase of the year, I think. Thanks, Jo, and colleagues for a very good report, very positive report. It's nice to see that we've, we're well placed in terms of land supply for the next five years. And it's been a difficult time for producing reports, but another example of cross council working with other authorities. So we can move together in the same direction. It's excellent news, Jo. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah, I mean, thanks, Leader. Joe made reference to this, but I do think it's worth just stating for any of our residents who are listening to this, that the report obviously draws attention to the, the yearly housing need of 458 houses. And I think it's important for the public to understand that that is based on a formula of expected housing need from the Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government. So there is an expectation by the government that we meet that need. We often hear people saying, you know, it's the council forcing house building on Greenbelt and destroying Greenbelt. And indeed, we've had a number of local representatives who are from the government's own party saying that this is Gedling bulldozing over the Greenbelt in, in the local area. It's very clear in this report that this is a government requirement. 458 houses from the government each year in terms of the formula, and that's set out in this report. Paragraph 73, Leader of the National Planning Policy Framework 2019, which is a piece of government guidance, states that local planning authorities should identify and update annually a supply of specific deliverable sites sufficient to provide a minimum of five years' worth of housing against their housing requirement, i.e. 458, as I just said. It then actually goes on to say that you should also, the supply of specific deliverable sites should in addition include a buffer of 5% to ensure choice and competition in the market, and then other certain requirements as well. The other thing I'd just say, John, obviously, which is, is, is linked to the report that Joe's brought before us, which is an excellent report, Jo, by you and your colleagues, is that, of course, there is another device that the government uses, which is called New Homes Bonus. And we're going to talk about this on a later item on the agenda. And effectively what that is, is the government incentivising councils who build over and above a certain amount within their borough. And if you don't, you're financially penalised. So if you've got a tax base that is reliant on lower band properties like ours, it's far more difficult to meet that requirement and therefore you lose out on money. So you're in a Hobson's Choice, really, John. On the one hand, you're being told by local representatives who represent the party that's currently in government, we shouldn't be building houses. But on the other hand, if you don't, you're penalised and your council loses money. So I just wanted to set the record straight, John, on some of the facts. But I think a superb report, Jo. Very, very helpful, very transparent, talks us through the relevant issues. And just wanted to stress that point. It's an obligation on the council, placed on us by central governments.
Anyone else? Thanks, Michael. No. I think it's interesting on that New Homes Bonus. I think we were told the other day, Michael, that was it two, out of all the houses we've had built, which is substantial, we've ended up with about £2,400, I think, to our benefit, which is not significant. Because when you see a strong word like bonus, you'd think it'd be a lot bigger. But if there's no one else, then I just look on the bottom line. There's nobody there. So just thank Jo and I'll move the recommendation that notes the Gedlin Borough Five-Year Housing Land Supply on 2020. It's on page 71. Seconda?
Seconded.
Seconding. We're agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. Thanks again, Jo and team. Item seven, which is the Prudential Treasury Indicators and Treasury Management Strategy Statement, commonly known as TMSSS, 2021/22. And this is Alison. We'll deliver that. Where is she? I've got to find her.
I'm here, Leader.
You're there. No, you're there. You're Alison. We call the other one, Ali. That's the more differential there. Right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Leader. Yes. So yes, this report seeks approval for the annual update of the Treasury Management Strategy Statement to the Prudential and Treasury Indicators for the council. So just, just to remind you, the Treasury Management Strategy provides the framework for the management of the council's borrowing for its capital investments, its normal treasury investments and cash flow management and the control of the risks that are related to that activity, whilst at the same time enabling achievement of optimum performance that is consistent with those risks. And so there have been no changes to the regulations or guidance which govern the strategy this year, or indeed since they were refreshed back in 2018, at which time further controls were introduced to ensure that non-treasury investments such as commercial property funded by borrowing do not put financial sustainability at risk. However, as reported at the last cabinet meeting, a magistrates treasury have withdrawn the ability to borrow from PWLB for the funding of commercial property investments that are primarily for yield. And they were doing withdrawing that on a whole plan basis. And you'll recall from the last meeting that we approved a recommendation to council that the council's commercial property investment strategy be withdrawn. And cabinet also approved the removal of the £5 million capital programme that we had for that. So the TMSS presented today reflects that position and the required prudential indicators that are in the report today represent only our service or the service-related expenditure. SIPF have recently announced that they will be updating the Prudential Code in response to the Treasury's position. So I think we can expect to see some changes in the guidance in the coming, in the coming financial year. But I think perhaps the remove, the action that we've taken already in removing CPIS, sorry, I shouldn't call it that, Commercial Property Investment Strategy, may probably may well reflect, already reflect any requirements that come forward in, in the changes to that guidance. So turning now to the detail of the report, the Treasury Management Strategy covers two main areas for us. So the capital matters and treasury management issues. In terms of capital, paragraph 2.1 details the proposed capital expenditure plans across the medium term, the level of borrowing required to support those plans, which stands at just under nine million for the three-year plan and another two million for the two-year indicative plan that we've presented there. And also alongside that, the full suite of prudential indicators that demonstrate that those plans are both affordable and sustainable in terms of the revenue, the impact on the revenue budget. The costs of the borrowing that reflected here are fully reflected in the medium-term financial plan and the revenue budget in the item later on the agenda. A paragraph 2.2 is the proposed minimum revenue provision policy, which sets out how the council will make prudent provision from its revenue budget to repay external long-term debt across the life of the assets being financed. And there's no change this year to the proposed method from that used last year. So the total MRP for next year is estimated at £609,000. Turning now to treasury-related matters, which include the borrowing strategy, which is detailed on page 131, the annual investment strategy and the required suite of treasury indicators. The annual investment strategy on page 133 sets out the council's investment priorities, which will be totally familiar to you. Security first, liquidity second and yield third. And it determines the types of financial institutions that the council can use for investing surplus cash over the coming year. So it maintains for us the same strict controls that the council has operated over recent years. By adopting this framework, we're setting out the minimum standards acceptable for the, by the council. In practice, all, all investments will be made with financial institutions of the highest financial ratings. Investment returns are next year expected to be lower than normal by about £35,000. And that's due to the low back rate, which is expected to continue for the foreseeable future. And that's detailed in the report as well. So the treasury indicators that set our limits on borrowing and investment activity are in there, the report, and they're there to ensure that, that it's all affordable and prudent. So I'll leave it there, Leader. The recommendations are set out on page 117.
Thank you very much. Comments? Michael?
Yeah, I mean, thanks, Alison, for, you know, comprehensive report. Obviously, I think the only other thing I'd add is huge amount of uncertainty at the moment with the pandemic and nobody knows, you know, where this is going to end, you know, what the impact economically will, will be. I think there are some people who, who, who think, you know, policy thinkers in this area, who think there will be a fairly swift economic recovery at such a point when, you know, the pandemic, the haze lifts. But I'm not, I'm not sure that is, is going to be the case. And anybody who's reading the news this morning and seeing that the, the variants that have been referenced in terms of the virus are now moving around, I see they've now moved to Staffordshire and other areas this morning, over and above the areas they were already in existence in, and the challenges that might pose to the vaccine rollout. I think it's difficult to see where, where, where this will end in terms of the, the economic impact. And that obviously provides uncertainty, not only for the national government, but then for, for councils as well. And, you know, we're going to come on, Leaders, talking about the, the, the general fund budget and the capital programme. But I think what is hugely disappointing, understand, of course, the pressures that are on the national government at the moment in the middle of a public health crisis and pandemic. But, but we need to move away from the situation where we are funding councils on a year-by-year basis, you know, spending round, not having surety, you know, we'll come to this in, in, in the latter reports on the agenda item, when you're trying to plan public services over a four, five-year medium-term financial strategy and you're living hand-to-mouth year to year is incredibly difficult. You know, added to all that, the economic headwinds of Brexit, whatever you view, you know, remain or leave, there are clearly economic headwinds resulting from Brexit. Anybody who is watching the news at the moment can't deny that. And, and some of the practical issues the country's having to work through, plus obviously the, the tail end of the, of the economic consequences and public health consequences indeed of, of the current pandemic. So a very tricky situation. And I think we're very fortunate to have Alison and her colleagues supporting us as a, as a local authority. I mean, I've said this before, John, but I'll say it again because I, I think you can't say this enough. I think it's remarkable, the way in which we as a local council, because of, you know, the expertise of our officers, have managed to run day-to-day services and provide a shield for the most vulnerable and a lifeline for the most vulnerable throughout a pandemic. And I, I just reflect, John, you know, and I don't seek to make a partisan point here, but you and I were on the ministerial call back in March, John, when the Secretary of State said to local councils, do whatever it takes, we will fully reimburse you. And, and councils did because there was no question cross-party that local government was going to play its role as the fourth emergency service or one of the fourth emergency services in this country. And I think it has done that. It's just disappointing that the government haven't kept their side of the bargain and that we're now being told that we won't be fully reimbursed for, for, for stepping up. And it was obviously the right thing to do, remains the right thing to do. But, but the, all of these things cost money, John, as we know. And ultimately, that burden falls on the local taxpayer. So I think the economic situation, as this report sets out, is a very tricky and challenging one. And I think we are very eagerly being steered through the situation by Alison and her colleagues at the council. So a thank you, John, as, as finance lead for, for the cabinet, to Alison and her colleagues, and indeed all of our staff, who I think have done a, a very good job in very difficult circumstances.
Thank you, Michael. Fully support those comments. And, you know, we've heaped praise on the department before, and we need to heap praise on the department again, particularly over the COVID situation, where they've been throwing grants at us from one end to the other. And I mean, to you and I, ordinary person in the street, it's baffling, but somebody has to sort that out. And that's why people like Alison and co are there and have done, doing an excellent job. So, you know, again, pass on our thanks, Alison. I don't know whether you ever go to sleep, but.
Couple of hours.
Yeah, count the money that we've got or not got before you go to sleep. It's changed from county chief.
Been too long for that.
Yeah. I get it. But it is deeply frustrating, as Michael says, because I remember being in, I think it was in the same room as, as Rishi Sunak, that said quite clearly, and, and the, the Secretary of State, Robert Jenrick, said, you will, we will match it pound for pound. And to be, to be honest, I know all councils are doing a lot, but at district levels, we are closer to the people, we are delivering. And that's with offices, staff, everybody else. If you think, and you look at some of the figures I've looked at recently for staffing of the waste department, there's, there's a few being off, but there's hardly anybody up being off. And the loyalty down there has been incredible, as it has been across this building. You know, there's no doubt in that. And I know a lot of people that work from home. So with those few comments, is there anybody else? I can't see any more hands raised. So we have recommendations on page 117. There are two recommendations there. Can I have a second, please?
Seconded, John.
Thank you. And we're agreed. We are agreed. Still with you, Alison. We're still on to capital programme now. So we'll spend a bit.
Yeah, spending quite a lot. Yeah. Thank you, Leader. Yeah. So this report outlines the proposed capital investment strategy, together with the capital programme and the resourcing of that programme for the period April 2021 to March 2024, and also the indicative programme for the period April 24 to March 26. In terms of the capital strategy, the main aim is to provide for us the principles that shape our investments, the investment decisions, sorry, and deliver a programme that contributes to the achievement of the Gedlin Plan. The main change to the strategy this year relates to the removal of the references to the commercial property investment strategy that's already spoken about under the previous agenda item. So turning now to the, the proposed programme, starting with expenditure. As you know, capital expenditure doesn't fit neatly within one financial year, as projects tend to have a lead in time before any expenditure is committed. And so this can involve reprofiling of budgets into future years. So as, as we've seen through the quarterly monitoring reports this year, a number of existing capital projects have already been slipped into 2122. So they total £5.4 million and they're detailed in the table in the report on page 163. But in total, the five-year capital budget is a total of £21.7 million. It is an ambitious programme and it has five main aims. Firstly, to complete those schemes carried forward and those planned for 2122, which focused on regeneration priorities. So those for developing the Arnold Market site. So those for developing the Arnold Market site, the completion of the Carlton Square scheme. And the development of business units at both Calvertin and Newstead, subject to funding for the Calvertin site. Secondly, we want to improve the provision of social and affordable housing, which we've already spoken about on this agenda. So first of all, through the acquisition of properties to provide both improved quality. And a more effective, cost-effective temporary accommodation provision. And the developments of Burton Road and Station Road. So that will be the subject of a report cabinet in the near future for consideration of the detailed scheme, as, as Joel referred to earlier. Thirdly, we'll continue to target support to our residents through the use of disabled facilities grants. Fourth, we'll continue and increase our commitment to carbon, to the carbon reduction and climate change initiatives. Including support for the Bee Pollinator Action Plan, the Green Lung Walking Route, the San Martin Bank at Gedlin Country Park. And the use of external grant funding to provide green homes, homes grants. As well as continuing the work for our own buildings to improve the energy efficiency of the civic centre through replacement windows. And also the flood of alleviation scheme that's included in there for the, for the borough. And finally, we'll continue to invest in maintaining and replacing the council's assets. Such as the vehicle fleet, parks and play areas and public conveniences. So turning now to capital resources. The council doesn't hold capital receipts in reserve. Instead, we will use them to finance capital expenditure as the receipts arise. This strategy, excuse me, was approved as part of the previous budget and still applies. In terms of financing this programme, capital receipts of one point nine million pounds will be applied. And this is ma, this is pretty much wholly related to the stage payments that we're still receiving in relation to the teal closed sale that happened a couple of years ago. Seven point seven million is available from capital grants and contributions. So some of that's still subject to confirmation. But a lot of that does, does relate to disabled facilities grants. One point one million will come from our revenue reserves, though, so that's mainly related to the Arnold Market, Carlton Square and Calvertin Enterprise units. So that leaves a shortfall there, still funding of ten point nine million, which will come from prudential borrowing. And that's, as we've seen on the previous report, is deemed to be both affordable and sustainable. But it is subject, I suppose, to, to, for the council delivering its planned budget reduction programme. Which is outlined in the General Fund Budget Report and the next item on the agenda. So together, they'll all provide the resources to fund the capital programme as outlined in the report. So I'll leave it there, Leader. The recommendations are set out on page 159.
Thank you. Comments? Michael?
Yeah, just to thank Alison and just to take two separate issues in turn. Obviously, I think the cautious approach that Gedlin Borough Council took to its commercial investment strategy. Has proven to be absolutely the right one. Good advice from Alison and Finance colleagues and our Chief Executive, Mike Hill. But also the right decision by Cabinet, John, to be cautious. And we've been vindicated because as Alison rightly says, Her Majesty's Treasury has now said that they're no longer willing to see. You know, large amounts of borrowing from the Public Works Loans Board for, for debt to yield. I.e. for, for raising income essentially, for the purposes of raising income. It is rather ironic, John, because I remember the days when we had a former Secretary of State, I think his name was Pickles. Who was telling us that we, we needed to be commercial, we needed to be investing in buildings, we needed to stop relying on hand-me-outs by, by the government. He also, I think, said that all council leaders were a bit like Boy Scout leaders and that they were volunteers. Glad to see the back of him, although it'd be nice to have a, a better Secretary of State than the one we've got at the minute. But I remember that time and now all of a sudden we're being told by, by this new administration, Conservative administration, that they now don't want us to do that. So it does sometimes feel like you're being marched up the hill just to be marched back down again. And I think the, the prudent approach, the cautious approach that we took. In spite calls actually by, from some councillors on the Borough Council for us to go faster in investing in commercial property. I think we're the right, with the right approach and I think we've been vindicated in terms of where the government's ended up. The only other point I wanted to make, John, if you just look, in spite of the economic challenges. At some of the investment in the capital programme, Arnold Market, Carlton Square. Delivering on a manifesto pledge we made in 2019 to regenerate our high streets. Looking after our precious planet by actually investing in carbon reduction initiatives. By doing things like looking after the wildlife, i.e. the San Martin Bank that you can see there that's been invested in. There's a clearly highlighted investment in provision of public toilets, very much needed, as we all know. From the feedback that we're getting back from residents. Investing in places like Lambly Lane, changing rooms and the picture renovation, thanks to the strong arguments that people like councillor Hollingsworth and others have made. More money for play areas, John. Councils around the country shutting down their play areas at this time, but we as a council continuing to invest. I think in the last few years, John, we've refurbished about 10 or 11 or 12 play areas across the borough. In spite of the, the cuts that we faced from the government, but also supporting business, the Calvertin Enterprise units, the Hazelford Way. Site as well to try and support businesses who are facing tough times as well. Plus much, much more that's set out here, the contemporary accommodation, the new sites at Burton Road and, and Station Road that councillor Hollingsworth's been pushing forward. The Greens Homes Grants to try and support people with being more energy efficient as we face climate change issues. And John, we talked at the start of this meeting about issues rural communities are facing. The money we're investing in flood alleviation schemes, working with the County Council, working with Southern Trent Water. To make sure we can protect communities like that, those that live in and around Ventle Avenue that councillor Wheeler represents. But also communities in Burton Joyce and those who live on the, the edge of the Trent Valley. So I just want to commend Alison. I think this is a really ambitious, aspirational. Capital programme that speaks to the issues that our residents care about, speaks to the problems that families in the borough are facing. It delivers on those pledges that we made, John, as an administration in 2019 in our manifesto. And we're doing this in the face of very, very difficult headwinds and a very difficult financial settlement, which Alison will talk about in the, in the next report. And I'll just finish on this, John. I think what I'm really pleased to see, which I know is an idea you were very passionate about, is. This clearly money allocated here as well for a memorial to honour those heroes. Both who have worked selflessly in the NHS as carers and key workers throughout the crisis. But also tragically, John, those 280 families who have lost a family member, who are no longer with us, often taken too soon because of this. Virus. And indeed, obviously, there are also other illnesses where families have lost, uh, family members. Now, I know, John, you've seen that with your own family, with your family who have worked in the NHS throughout this pandemic. So I'm really pleased to see that the council is reflecting and remembering on those 280 families who have tragically been hit by this, uh, virus. And certainly our heart goes out to and our deepest sympathies go out to that family. But I think this is, those families, but I think this is a superb report. And I think Alison and the team, Service Managers, SLT, but also the Cabinet. And our own administration have set out a really, really good capital programme here that deals with the issues that are facing our families and our businesses across the borough.
Thanks, Michael. Yeah, I mean, if it's one pleasing thing is to see all these things that are going to happen. They're in there, there is a plan. And a lot of councils would like to be in that position. There's no doubt in that. And you consider this from where we come from, which is, you've mentioned before. We are second year now, second year at the bottom of any funding from the government. That's a fact. It's not fictional. And we're not jumping around over it, apart from the fact we've made our representations, which sure is. Some of the seed lands on the stony ground. Well, I think I was when it was on, you know, rock hard granite, because we've got nothing back on that one. But again, it's a credit to those people that are putting these bids together. I was particularly seeing, you know, all these things on there. Then I saw, as you mentioned, another play area. If you remember all the fracar up in Monsham Park and around there over that. Do nothing, we don't do anything, don't care. Well, this proves we do. And gradually slowly but surely, along with Conway, along with all the others that we've put in there. Refurbishment here, the repairs that have been, when people have vandalised expensive pieces of equipment. I think we've done collectively, both as members and officers, a tremendous job. And we should be proud of that. So I'm going to, is there anybody else wanting to comment? I can't see anybody else on there. So I'll move those recommendations. There are four that is on page 159. Can I have a second here? Seconded that. Thank you. We're agreed. Moving on to the next meeting bit. We're still with you, Alison?
Yeah, thank you, Leader. Yeah. So yes, this, uh, this General Fund Budget Report sets out the continuing financial challenges that Gedlin faces. Following the unprecedented cuts to central government funding and the now added uncertainties of the COVID-19 pandemic. You will recall that last year, the planned four-year comprehensive spending review, the fair funding review. And the Business Rates Retention Scheme Extension were all deferred due to uncertainties surrounding Brexit. Resorting in a one-year spending round last year. This year, due to the COVID, these have all been deferred again. Meaning another one-year spending round and local government finance settlement. This ongoing delay means that councils have no clarity or certainty over how services will be funded beyond next year. Which presents incredible challenges in the development of a sustainable medium-term financial plan. This is exacerbated by the uncertainties of COVID in terms of the ongoing expenditure, expenditure pressures and income losses. And how they will be financed next year. So the provisional one-year local finance settlement was published on the 17th of December last year. We do now have the final settlement that was laid in Parliament this week. And it has been confirmed that there will be no change from the provisional figures that are presented in the report. This means that over the 11-year period from 2010 to 2022. The council will, will have faced settlement reductions of 5.8 million or 65% of our, of our funding. Based on the government's core spending power. Which also includes further reductions in new homes bonus and assumptions for maximum increases in council tax. Which are a local decision for us. So in terms of those core spending power arrangements, Gedlin do, as John has just said for us. Remain the worst affected council in England for the second year running. And that's a comparison to the Comprehensive Spending Review in 201516. So in terms of new homes bonus, which is in that core spending power assessment. Due to the one-year spending round, this scheme has continued for a further year. But for Gedlin and probably due to COVID and an increase in the number of empty homes that we've experienced. During that period, Gedlin has not achieved sufficient growth. So we will not be receiving a new homes bonus for 2122. Other than a, a small amount of two thousand pounds for the affordable homes premium. And the Secretary of State had announced last year that a consultation on the future of the incentive. Will, will be, will be undertaken because it's not clear that the current form is focused on incentivising homes where they're needed most. But that, that consultation has also been delayed. So we wait to see what they, what they'll do with that as part of the spending review next year. So changes in total for new homes bonus scheme have had a really significant detrimental impact on Gedlin's budgets. With the award for 2020, 2122 being two hundred and seventy seven thousand pounds lower than we received in 2021. And when compared to what we received five years ago to now, we have effectively lost 2.3 million pounds per annum from our budgets. So just moving, moving on to a new item in settlement for this year. The government have introduced a new grant, a new lower tier services grant for Borough Council, Borough and District Councils. This is split into two parts. The first part based on a needs assessment, and this has been provided to all local, to all district councils. And for Gedlin, that's a hundred and thirty one thousand pounds. The second part was to provide a minimum floor funding. So that no authority has a reduction in core, core spending power when compared to 2021. There was no consideration, of course, spending power reductions prior to 2021. And so it appears to benefit those that have not previously suffered reduction in new homes bonus. Even though the legacy payments reductions would have been planned for, for most of those, by most of those authorities. Our consultation responses did question that treatment. But as John said, and, and as I've said earlier, there's been no change to that in the final settlement. So turning to COVID now, the government did announce, as it announced as part of it. As part of alongside settlement, a COVID support package. Which is fully detailed in the report at, at paragraph 2.4.7. So this does provide an expenditure pressures grant, funding to cover increased CTRS caseload costs. Funding for a 75, cover 75% of income compensation for collection fund losses that were related to this financial year. And three months for income compensation to cover 75% of our losses on sales fees and charges. So whilst that's welcome, this doesn't cover our projected income losses. Leaving a net cost of the general fund of just under half a million pounds next year. So this budget assumes that we will not face any, any new COVID expenditure pressures in next year. And if they do arise, then they'll need to be covered by other, other budget reductions in the absence of any, any further grant. In response to the consultation on the COVID package, we did request consideration that the sales fees and charges compensation be extended. Beyond three months in line with our expectation that our income losses will be affected for a longer period in next year. But that's not been acknowledged in the final package that was announced yesterday. So that, at the moment, still seems to be at the three, at the three-month period. But there is a potential that government will, will review that position if COVID impacts continue. So to manage our past funding reductions. Gedlin has been successful in the past of delivering, delivering its efficiency programme. So from the start of the austerity arrangements, the arrangements is the wrong word. The austerity, we've, we've actually implemented a programme of efficiencies totaling six and a half million pounds. Of which 1.7 million was still to be delivered between 2021 and 2223. So that programme has been fully, fully reviewed during the year. And you'll have seen some of the issues coming forward in the budget monitoring reports through the year. And you'll be aware that we've had some difficulties delivering part of that programme. That I can now confirm that 600,000 pounds of the current programme is not deliverable. But to replace that, we've developed the new programme with yourselves. And there's a, a proposal for a new efficiency programme of just under 600,000 pounds. Which is proposed in paragraph 2.53 of the report for, for the delivery over the next four years. So that enables us to maintain that, that programme of efficiencies that we were, we were expecting. So given the financial position, we do only have one resource development bid this year. And that's proposed in paragraph 2.5.4. And that's for a tree management officer to mitigate a risk that's been identified within our corporate risk register. Moving on to income, we are recommending a three percent increase in discretionary fees and charges. So that's a, a, a policy that we've been following for a number of years now. And that's, that would generate us just under 90,000 pounds per annum. And that, that, that's detailed in the table there at paragraph 2.5.5. We have completed a review of the reserves for the council. And the, the minimum general fund balance has, is now set at one million pounds. We've reviewed earmarked reserves in light of the financial challenges. And we've identified in the region of a half million pounds that potentially could be reclassified back, back to the general fund. If, to support, if we require that to support the budget position going forward. But that's something that we'll review in light of the current, current year's out term position. When that comes to Cabinet in May, I think it's May. Yeah. So moving on now to the Medium Term Financial Plan, that's presented in section three of the report. Starting on page 211. So as we've said earlier, this is presented against a backdrop of major uncertainty. And due to the reasons I've already outlined, the uncertainty of funding beyond next year. The uncertainty of the local government finance reforms and the COVID expend, COVID expenditure pressures. And a possible downward pressure on pay award adds a further uncertainty for us. And in terms of the pay award, whilst the Chancellor has announced a pay freeze for, for the public sector workers next year. This doesn't determine the local government pay award. And at the moment, the Medium Term Financial Plan does assume a two percent pay award for each of the five years of the plan. So if pay negotiations do follow the Chancellor's lead, a lower pay award does actually present an upside risk in the Medium Term Financial Plan. Within the Medium Term Financial Plan, council tax increases are included at the maximum level. That's available for, before we have to. Go to a referendum. But of course, the level of that is determined by council on an annual basis. So based on the current information available, in order to achieve a balanced Medium Term Plan. Additional ongoing budget reductions or funding increases of 600,000 pounds will be required. With 500,000 pounds needed in 202223. And this has been assumed in the Medium Term Plan that's presented in the report today. So whilst that's not yet supported by any outline business plans, given the backdrop of the. of the funding uncertainty, and the fact that savings are not required until year two of the plan, we do still have time to develop those options for delivery, and we will be starting to consider those during next year. So just finally, the section 151 officer is legally obliged to comment on the budget prepared, and I can advise Cabinet that the estimates are sufficiently robust and that the level of reserves forecast to be held at the 31st of March 2022 are what is deemed professionally to be adequate. And so, Leader, I'll leave it there. The recommendations are set out on page 191, which did include a provisional recommendation whilst we waited for the settlement to be finalised. So I'll hand that back to you.
Yeah, thanks Alison. I think the thing that's coming loud and clear there, and something we need to jump around on, although trying to keep a reasonably even keel in local politics, it's disgraceful because 5.8 million, 65% of the core funding lost since 2010. That's a fact, nobody can go against that, and there'll be people jumping around saying, oh, you've done this, you've done that, done the other. We've done extremely well, because if you think of the likes of Northampton, we've not had the government coming in here, bailing us out, Northampton, Surrey, and on Newsgate last night, I can't remember all of them, but I think they were all Conservative places, but there were four more councils. I don't know if they've actually put the 114 notice in, but they're getting close to it, and they will be bailed out as well. This has been deliberately done to us, it's strangling us, and yeah, you deliver for us, and we keep pushing for different things, and we try and different ways of funding, but it cannot go on like this, it cannot. You know, you'll get to that point where we cannot do it, and I do think there's a political will at the back of this, trying to drive us out of business, at the same time patting us on the head, saying, well done, haven't you done well Covid, haven't you done well with people, with food banks, haven't you done well on this, that and the other? But actually, you're stripped as bare, and it's really frustrating. I look forward to the debate in council, I look forward to when people like councillor Smith etc. stand up there and start attacking us, because we agreed at the last meeting, the last full council meeting, we sent a letter to the minister, we'd met with the minister, we'd met with the MP, the MP was supportive, to be fair to Tom Randle, he was supportive, and we sent there, and we got absolutely diddly squatters, I think Michael would say, back from the government. No encouragement, nothing, not even thank you. But anyway, I'll ask, there must be some comments on it, because I'm really raging at the moment, the more you go through these biggers, and you look at that, that is a deliberate, deliberate political attack on this council by the Conservative government. Michael and then Peter.
Yeah, thanks Leader, and I think you're right to say what you've just said, and again, thank you to Alison for a very, very professional report that both sets out the risks and the challenges facing council in terms of the ongoing savings efficiencies that we will need to find, but also sets out some of the ambition with the remaining money that we've got, John. And I think, at the first point, I'd just start by saying, as you said, John, is that this council, under this administration since 2010, has a very proud track record of getting on with making the savings we've needed to make, we've not whinged about it, we've been very clear as a Labour administration that we will look after the public pound, and that is what we've done, very ably supported by Alison and her colleagues, where we've needed to make savings, we have. And actually, that's not just applied to reduction in staff or reduction in services, we've protected frontline services. You will well recall, John, that we also save money in terms of our politics as well, when we reduce the number of councillors on the council, so it's applied to us as councillors as well. I guess the point I just started, John, is that anybody calmly standing back as a resident and taxpayer in Gedling Borough, looking at the government's own figures that very clearly show that for the second year running, we are the worst affected council in England in terms of the reduction in money available for us to spend on public services, any resident, any resident, whatever your politics, whatever your view, whatever your background, would calmly sit there and say, how can it be right that my local area, that I contribute to as a taxpayer, has had a reduction in 20.2% in the money available to it since 2015-16, but Stratford-on-Avon, a similar sized council, where the minister responsible for the vaccination, Nadeezim Zahawi, represents, has had an increase of 27.5%, a massive 47.7% difference. So they've gone up by 27.5%, and we here in Gedling, not the council, we all as taxpayers have gone down by 20.2%. And I think anybody just calmly reflecting, aside from your party politics, will look at that and say, how is that fair? How is that a country where everybody's being given an equal crack of the whip? And as you said, John, we will make no apologies in this administration for continuing to ask that question on behalf of our residents. The second point I'd just make is this, John, which is referred to in Alison's report for us about the budget. The small increases in core spending power, that's the technical term, all it means really is the money available to councils to fund public services, the small increases that the Secretary of State and government talked about when this was announced in the House of Commons this year, are entirely predicated on a £2 billion increase intake by the Treasury in council tax. So let me just spell that out in layman's terms for everybody who are taxpayers here in Gedling. That's a 6.6% increase in council tax for every household in the country to meet that £2 billion that the Treasury wants to take in. So effectively, what's happening is, you've got the Chancellor and Prime Minister have decided that the taxpayer through council tax is going to pay the price for Covid. It's a Covid tax, in essence, and as you said, John, we're left with no other choice because we've got this twin problem here in Gedling, we're both the worst affected council and we're being forced by the government to increase council tax, because if we don't, key services that our public rely on will have to stop and will be affected. And some of those services are absolutely critical services, including waste collection and other services. You picked out a really interesting figure, John, I think if you think about this in terms of home economics, Margaret Thatcher used to like home economics, we've lost 65% of our funding in the last 10 years. If you asked any household to continue to run their own house, having lost 65p in every pound when it comes to paying the bills, I think they'd struggle. And you know, I think the point, as you said, John, is we will continue to try and do a good job in difficult circumstances, but it is very, very tough. The final point, John, we will have a debate in full council about this. This is a positive budget, as I've just said in the capital programme, it has some investment in key areas like climate change, like supporting the most vulnerable in terms of the disabilities grants that we'll continue to pay, continue to invest in community safety, as councillor Alice knows, we've invested in CCTV, we've invested in working alongside the police to tackle antisocial behaviour in those areas. There'll be lots more that you'll be announcing, I know in the budget speech, John, in relation to that. But I'd just finish by saying this, I started by saying that, you know, our residents would be asking a question about how it can be right, we've seen a 20.2% reduction, and yet Stratford-on-Avon's seen a 27.5% increase. The other question I think people will be asking, John, is, how on earth can it be right that out of the top 20 councils in the country this year that have received an increase in core spending power, 18 are Conservative controlled? That to me says that we've got a government that's not governing in the national interest, but that is governing in narrow party political interests, and I think in the middle of a pandemic, that is nothing short of a disgrace. We all have to play a role here, government, private business, the NHS, public health, local councils, districts and borough councils, the voluntary sector, and indeed our residents to challenge this pandemic, and I think now is not the time for party politics from central government. Put local government on a sustainable footing, and we will pull our weight and play our role in making sure that this country gets back to an economic recovery that we all need, so that we can protect people's jobs and protect people's lives. That's all we're asking for, we're not asking for millions and millions of pounds, we're not asking to be put even at the top of the queue, we're simply asking for our residents and businesses in Gedling to be treated in a fair and even-handed way, like the rest of the country, and I don't think that's an unreasonable request, Leader. So like you, I look forward to the debate, John, and I certainly will make no apologies for continuing to be asked why we're being treated in this unequitable and unjust way.
Thank you, Michael. Peter? Peter, you're on. He's waving his pen around.
Councillor Barnes, I think your iPad is muted, are you able to unmute?
I think you can actually unmute, Caroline, I think, as the presenter, I think, can you do that?
I can mute, but I can't unmute unfortunately.
Anyone else want to speak on this? And I'll just go and I'll nip in and just see what's happening. Okay. Well, I can't get through to him, so.
John, do you want me to just chair while you go and sort out the...
Yeah, please, and we should sort his computer out.
We have got a form of words, Mike, because I know that as Alison says, that we do need to make a recommendation to council, obviously, in relation to the council tax level for Gedling's element of the bill for the year ahead. So I think the leader will move a recommendation, which will be seconded by me, that's a council tax increase of 2.97%, brackets £5, which balances the financing of net council tax requirement of £6,471,100 in 2021-22. So if I just spell that out in practical terms, for Gedling's element, which is 9% if you're council tax bill, if you're a resident, the rest of the money, about 77% goes to the county council, a portion goes to the police, a portion goes to the fire service to pay for the fire service, and a portion goes to your parish council if you have one, only 9% comes to Gedling, even though we issued a bill. Next year, for residents in a band A and band B property, which is the majority of our houses in the Borough, it will be an increase of £3.33 for a band A property and £3.89 for the year for a band B property. And I think, as the leader said and I've said, we're left with no choice, we're being forced into this by the government as a result of the assumptions that they've made in their figures, and I hope that residents will feel that that very limited increase is good value for money, although it's certainly done with a heavy heart, because families are struggling at the moment, we'll continue to do whatever we can as a council to protect families wherever we possibly can, and we have certainly been doing that. We've got a very, very generous council tax reduction scheme here, and if families are struggling with their council tax, anybody watching this recording back, please do contact the council and ask about our council tax reduction scheme if you are struggling to pay bills, because that's why we put that scheme in place, to help those who may be struggling. So I've seconded the recommendation, John, if you want to move it, I've read it out.
Yeah, thank you. You've read that extra piece on the amendment, 2.9%?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I'll move it then, you second it. Pete, I've got Peter on now, so he should be there. Peter.
First of all, I just want to thank all the staff in the Borough, for what a terrific job they've done over the year. I think the financial department have done extremely well with the way that we've been treated from the central government. I've been on this council in our best part for 35 years, and I've never seen the council treated with such disrespect from this central government than I've seen in my whole political life. And I think it's a disgrace the way the people of Gedling Borough have been treated. We're being run by a council what's been fair, honest and genuine, and now we're not, we're just being treated like rubbish, and I think it's a bloody, I'm sorry, I'm through, but I think it's a damn disgrace the way the government has treated this Borough Council and this district, because we're the best district in Nottinghamshire without any doubt, and I think it's a disgrace, and the government ought to be ashamed of itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, for that passion. Is there anyone else? That's been moved and seconded, it's on page 191. Are we agreed?
Yeah.
Agreed. Thank you. Thanks, Alison.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 10, which is review of the Gedling Plan. Now, I'm not quite sure who is going to do that, were you doing it, Mike?
Me, Leader, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Leader, a bit more positive than the budget figure. So the three-year Gedling Plan 2020-2023 was approved by full council last year in March 2020, and as part of that service planning process, it is, you know, right and appropriate that we review it on an annual basis. So this report presents the outcome of that first annual review, and you will note, Leader, that it makes recommendations for a small number of minor tweaks, amendments, if you like, to summon a wording around, you know, the actions included in the Gedling Plan. The first amendment is around the realignment of responsibilities to new officers, that relates to the new management team structure. The second change really is some small amendments to the wording for some of the objectives and actions included in the Gedling Plan. And finally, the most important one, we have added in three new priorities to be included, you know, four years, two and three of the Gedling Plan, first one around delivery of the Equalities Action Plan, extremely important to us as a council. The second one, to develop a strategic approach with partners in building a resilient third sector, again, links back to the reductions in government finance, that we need to look to our third sector to help us deliver these key services to our public, and that's very important to us to start working in that manner. And the third one, councillor Payne's already mentioned, is as a result of the motion in the last council meeting to work on developing a B and pollinator action plan. So those changes have all been picked up in the refreshed Gedling Plan as attached in the appendix chair, and I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Viv, do you want to say anything on the equality that's been added to that?
I'll just say to welcome that, to come back to Cabinet, I'm looking forward to, yeah, implementing that. So yeah, that's good, it'd be a good piece of work.
Thank you. Anyone else? Michael?
Just as Mike says, you know, in spite of the financial doom and gloom, you know, this remains a very ambitious plan. The council continues to not only concern itself with those services which are its legal requirement, i.e. its statutory duty, but it also goes above and beyond, and we're doing work in all sorts of areas that actually aren't strictly our responsibility to make sure that we can support our communities. And certainly, when we, as a Labour administration, took the motion around the B and Pollinator Action Plan, really pleased to see that approved, disappointed it didn't receive support from councillors across all groups, but certainly we got it through with the support of our Labour group, and it's good to see that now weaved into the council plan, because, you know, I think anybody who watches David Attenborough on the TV, or watches some of the challenges that the planet faces, the one thing we've absolutely got to do after this pandemic is make sure we take care of this precious planet, because there's only one of it, and we only get one shot at this, and the carbon emissions damage that's being done to the planet, the damage to some of the precious species, you know, bees species are not just something that's lovely to look at, we rely on these species for our food and for the world to revolve. And I think it's absolutely shocking that, you know, I think well over 10 species in the UK have been extinct, John, in terms of certain bees, and in Europe, lots and lots of different varieties of bees are now teetering on the brink and are extinct as well. And, you know, food on the table, John, relies on these precious creatures, so anything the council can do to practically support and encourage the reproduction of bees and pollinators, which includes things like planting pollinator-friendly trees, planting pollinator-friendly wildflower corridors, but also stopping the use of some of these very nasty pesticides and insecticides which are seen to kill these creatures, I think is really, really important. You know, we're very lucky as human beings to be able to live on this planet, but we need to make sure that we're treating the people who we share, the creatures we share this planet with respect, and I think we haven't always done that as a human race, and it's about time that we started doing.
Thank you. Anyone else? No, we'll take the recommendations on there, which are on page 304.
John, Jenny, councillor Holling.
Sorry, Jenny, did miss that one. Jenny?
Thank you. Just at the bottom of 304, regarding the mentoring circles, we've already had some excellent work with our partner agencies to deliver mentoring circles, which have gone very, very well, is very encouraging. I just hope that the government gets its act together on the Kickstart Programme, which again, has overpromised and comprehensively underdelivered. We've got a very good business support officer in post now, and I think building resilience will be absolutely crucial to small business going forward, so that change is welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny, and just for a moment, I'll finally move that vote. Mike, just a note on this one, there's a beautiful picture on the back of it, of a country park on one of the information boards there. Is it possible to house some of those around council buildings, you know, eventually? Because it recognises the talents we've got out there, and I know that the friends of the country park, they've not done one this year, but they did one a couple of years ago, a calendar with some beautiful photography on it, and I don't think we celebrate that enough, but that's just an aside. So it's the sort of thing we do when we're doing the new foyer, or we're redesigning a foyer, that one or two things that we're really proud of are there, but that is astonishing. that is a stunning, I don't know who's taking that picture, it doesn't say, it probably needs crediting with someone, it just has a view from Gedling Country Park.
It was Tracy Whitefoot, John.
Did Tracy do that one, well, I could, I ought to have noticed that, somebody, somebody would.
John, there's an Instagram account of Gedling Country Park has some lovely pictures.
Beautiful, you know, I thought.
I think it's a really good idea to get some of those printed up and put around buildings, great.
Yeah, put around not just our building, but the leisure centres, those types of places like that. Anyway, that was an aside.
Just a point of information, John, the Gedling Country Park and Carlton Rotary actually produced a calendar this year.
Did they? I haven't seen one this year.
I'll let you have one.
Right, thank you. Three oh three is the page, two recommendations there, move it.
Seconded.
Agreed.
Agreed.
That's fine, on to the last item, which is the forward plan, and that, well, we just have to note, and I think it's a bit about parish council, if I can find it, parish councils, is it on the back somewhere, community infrastructure levy on there, and that's coming to the eighteenth of March cabinet, and the station road, Burton Road regeneration sites, again, eighteenth of March, so we just have to note that. But with that, that was a warm meeting, it'll probably be even warmer in a few, a couple of weeks' time, but we look forward to it, and we must continue to combat, must continue to combat the, you know, it's just, it's just wrong, five point eight million, sixty five percent of your core funding, just robbed, it's illegal, we've been legally robbed. But anyway, I'll leave it to that and thank everyone. Keep safe, keep safe to our community, and we'll, we'll keep helping to try and keep people's chins up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, leader.